I'll queue me in a moment. Good evening, and welcome back to our series of election forums produced by the Long Beach Community Action Partnership with Padnet.TV, your community media center and Long Beach's public access television station. I'm Matt Kaplan, back this time with four of the five candidates who hope to replace departing Gary DeLong as council member for Long Beach's 3rd District. We are broadcasting live on Charter Channel 32 and Verizon Channel 41 in Long Beach and beyond. We're also streaming live at Padnet.TV. That's where all of these forums are available as video on demand. Additional cable cast times are listed on our elections page at Padnet.TV. Now, just as with our previous programs about the mayoral and 1st District Council races, we have one very short hour for tonight's forum. I'll say again that no voter can expect to be fully informed about either the candidates or the issues in that amount of time. Fortunately, there are lots of other resources that you can look to for help, including the candidates' own materials and the reporting by our city's print and online journalists. We'll just help you get acquainted. The rest is up to you. The candidates will introduce themselves in a moment. First, though, let's meet tonight's excellent panelists. Each of them will have time to ask two questions. Each candidate will have one strictly enforced minute to respond. The panelists are Shane Newell, City Editor for the Daily 49er at California State University Long Beach, which is in the 3rd District. Go Beach! DeeDee Rossi, formerly of CSU OB, now Executive Director of the Belmont Shore Business Association, and Josh Stewart, staff writer for the Long Beach Register. We will go now to our candidates for their one-minute opening statements, beginning with Martha F. Gibson.
Thank you. Thank you, Matt. I want to thank Padnet. I want to thank the candidates, and I want to thank the audience for this opportunity to hear us. My name is Martha Flores-Gibson, and I'm running for the 3rd District. I am a businesswoman. I am an educator. I'm a counselor and a teacher. And I'm a lifelong resident, and I have a passion for the district. And I'm here. I live in the district, and I am here now for the district. Thank you.
Thank you, Martha. We'll go now to James K. Lewis.
Hello, I'm Jim Lewis, and I have a real passion for community and the opportunity to see the city flourish, having an impact in that process with you, the voter, individuals, businesses, nonprofits, and government entities to really help bring people together around what's in the best interest of the city and the 3rd District. There are several key areas I think we really need to address going forward, and that's public safety and infrastructure, financial responsibility and accountability, and jobs and economic growth. And I hope that we will be able to cover those this evening, and you can always go to my website, jimlewisforcouncil.com, and follow up all the issues there. Thank you very much.
And thank you, Jim. Susan Price.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. My name is Suzy Price, and I'm running for your next council seat. I am an Alameda Heights resident, a proud alumni of Long Beach State. I earned my bachelor's and my master's degree there. I have two young kids who attend elementary school in our local district, and I'm running because I bring a fresh and energetic leadership to the city council. I am excited about the opportunity to serve as your next council person, and I believe that there is a great importance in us thinking about what we need now in the present and in the future in terms of the generations to come. We are blessed and lucky to live in the 3rd District, which has all of the great attributes that we all enjoy about our community, and I ask for your support in this council race. I bring a new, dynamic energy to the 3rd District. Thank you.
And thank you, Susan. The last of our four candidates is Jack Rosenberg.
I'm Jack Rosenberg, and I'm running for the city council seat in the 3rd District. I've lived in the 3rd District for over 20 years. I'm involved in a number of different agencies within the city, SEDAC, along with the current golf commission, working with the city, managing those five golf courses. I also am a member of the Century Club, the local Rotary. I was one of the founders of Food for Kids, and I'm also a mentor with Operation Jump Start. I have four different issues that I want to address with regard to the city. First thing is strong fiscal policy, growing the economy, working on the infrastructure, and also growing the community. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
And thank you, Jack. It looks like if this is an omen, we won't have any problem keeping to our speaking limits today. We are off to another good, very good start. The first of our panelists with a question for you is Shane Newell of the Daily 49er. Shane?
Hello, everyone. How do you plan to interact with young people in City Council District 3, and would social media be a tool?
Yes, Martha, you go first.
Well, this is one of my passions. I remember when Facebook first got started, I couldn't sleep at night because I knew it was something big. And so I've been a fan of social media. You name it, and I'm on it. I'm on Facebook, Instagram, Twitter, LinkedIn, any type of internet access to social media, and I'm on it because I really believe in it. And the way I want to engage with the young voters is including them at the table. They have ideas that I don't know of, and so part of my platform would be to engage the youth. And I'm very passionate about youth and children, and that's going to be part of my agenda, for sure.
All right. Thank you, Martha Gibson. We'll go to James Lewis.
Youth are probably one of the most important preventative measures for gang involvement and public safety in our city, in most cities. Youth are what we are building and leaving a legacy for. Our children should be our initiative, our impetus, to do whatever we can to provide the best city, the best resources, the best services, the best education, and to recognize that our youth today -- I hesitate to call them youth -- are young people today that are coming up in leadership. They have a unique passion for community, for collaboration, and a hesitancy to get involved in institutions because they want to have their hands on. And I really look forward to working with them and mentoring the upcoming leadership in Long Beach.
Thank you, Jim. Susan Price.
Thank you. Our generation is changing. Every single person now has a cellphone attached to their hands at all times. Our youth, our young people, are communicating in different ways, ways that older generations don't understand, ways that I don't understand. We have to, as a society, learn what the technology is and learn what those changes are because that is our way to communicate with a broader community. The demographics of the 3rd District is changing. We have a large university in our district, and we need to be able to communicate and reach out to those people and find a way to get to the heart of their issues. Social media is a key way for us to be able to communicate with those people. I am already actively involved in social media, and as much as I had hoped my kids would teach me how to use it when they're in high school, I've already had to learn. The time has come. Communication is taking a different form. As a council member, I will engage in social media in every aspect of my operations. I believe the youth are a key to our future.
And thank you, Susan. Jack Rosenberg.
Yes, I have a son who's 28 years old and a daughter who's 31. My son is engaged in the entertainment industry. He communicates through the social media, whether it be Facebook, Twitter, Instagram, YouTube. This is the way he communicates with his father. He has brought me up to speed very rapidly. He was helpful when I brought a crew down from Hollywood to do our videos. Through him, I have begun to really understand how valuable social media is and will be, and I will call on him to keep me up to speed on how to use it. I'm using it in my campaign, and I will use it once elected to the 3rd District City Council seat.
And thank you, Jack. We'll go now to DeeDee Rossi of the Belmont Shore Business Association for the first of her two questions. Answering first this time will be James Lewis. DeeDee?
Thank you, Matt. This is really important to the business community of Belmont Shore and the residents, for sure. Due to budget cuts over several years to the fire department, Engine 8 in Belmont Shore, as you know, has been taken out of service. Do you believe Engine 8 should be restored? If so, how would you restore it?
James?
DeeDee, thank you. It is very important, and I walk in that part of our district, it is a loud voice coming. Even a fire, one of the fire captains I've talked to that lives on the shore said, "What's your plan?" And I said, "Put the engine back." I think it's critical for the safety of that area. How do we do it? It costs money. We, the district actually supports, tax-wise, supports the whole shift of the East Division Police Department. That's how much funding comes through our businesses on the shore. There is a way to, I think, to allocate funds, and also I have another, a broader plan to work with the port and the airport in getting funds through their sources to increase the funding of their sphere of influence that would make more money available to the other areas of the district.
Thank you, Jim. Susan Price.
Thank you. DeeDee, that's a very good question. I have spent some time talking with our fire chief and fire chiefs throughout the state of California regarding the importance of having a top-notch fire department. In the 3rd District, I believe that we are currently vulnerable because we have lost Engine 8. I believe that one of the top priorities of the council person for the 3rd District is going to be to restore the fire department and restore police services to acceptable levels in the city and specifically in the 3rd District. We have been hit very hard. How do I expect to do that? We do have a slight budget surplus, and we're going to be able to fund some key services that have been lost. And I expect that we will work together in collaboration as a council to restore Engine 8 because, right now, the residents at the Peninsula and in Naples are extremely vulnerable to potential harm because of the response times, given the fact that Engine 8 is not there. Having a top-notch fire department is not just something nice to have. It's an essential thing to have, and it needs to be a top priority for the council. Thank you.
And thank you, Susan. Jack?
Well, everybody agrees we'd like to see Station 8 reinstated. The situation is, with an annual budget of $400 million, we had a surplus of less than 1%. At the end of the day, we need to grow the economy so we can have a much larger surplus in order to reinstate Agent, excuse me, Station 8. We have union contracts coming up in September of 2016 with police and fire. Those are going to be very difficult union negotiations because, again, we want to add to police, we want to add to fire, but without increasing the income for the city, it is going to be very difficult. We're not going to find a pot of gold. It's going to take growing our economy in order to get this extra funding.
Thank you, Jack Rosenberg. And Martha Gibson, you'll be the last to respond to this question.
Great question. For me, it's a brotherhood because my son is the fire captain, and he's also the treasurer, and also my son is the paramedic. So for me, as a mother, this issue is very important. So we not only want to take care of the firemen, we want to take care of the safety of the community. And myself, living in the Peninsula, it's crucial on every second counts for the life of one person on the Peninsula. So I would say that we can find oil money, one-time money, one-time funding, or ongoing funding, and we can make it work. We need to increase revenues, for sure. However, public safety is a key issue in the 3rd District and in Long Beach as well.
Thank you, Martha. All right. The last of our panelists that we'll hear from in this round is Josh Stewart of the Long Beach Register. And Josh, the first to answer your question, will be Susan Price.
Thank you. Gary DeLong is winding down his second term on the city council. One of you may replace him. What ways will your representation differ from his, and in what ways will it be similar?
Thank you, Josh. Well, I respect the work that Gary has done. He and I are parents of kids at the same school, and I know that he's done a lot of great things for our community. I would hope to continue the great work he's done with infrastructure. And as his replacement, I would hope to serve on the same committees that he serves on, which are very close to my heart, the Budget Committee and his involvement with the Wetlands. I believe that those two issues are key for the city and for the 3rd District, and it would be my hope that I would replace his seat on those committees, if at all possible. I believe that Gary has taken a very responsible approach to fiscal management, and I run a very tight ship in my household, and I respect that value. As a council person, I would expect to uphold some of the conservative views that he's taken in terms of how we spend our money. In terms of priorities, I think I would prioritize public safety at the top, and I think that I would do everything that I could to make sure that resources are allocated to the one service that the citizens deserve, and that's public service. Thank you.
And thank you, Susan. Jack Rosenberg.
Yes. Gary's done a very good job, along with Bob Foster, of taking us through some very difficult times when $130 million had to be parred out of the budget. Going forward, I'm in a place in life that I am able to work and have office hours during the week and in the evenings. As I said earlier, my children have grown. My responsibilities will be to the 3rd District and to the city of Long Beach. Moving forward, I think that the budget situation is going to be the most vital subject that the city and the 3rd District will be dealing with over the next two to three years. This recovery and our recession is timid, to say the least, and without increased revenues, we're not going to be able to do the things that many of the councilmen, and myself included, want to do. That's our top priority. I hope to head up the Budget Committee to make sure that there isn't overspending. There's a number of councilmen that want to spend that 1% over and over again, and it won't work.
Thank you, Jack. Martha Gibson will come back to this end.
Great question. I would love to keep the staff that he has. They are stellar. They know the community. They know the business areas. I would love to keep them firsthand. I would say on a continuum, I would continue the monthly meetings, the information sections. I would really keep the website going because that's also informative for citizens or residents that do not attend the meetings. And I would say a continuum in what he has started in the district. I wouldn't say different. I would say a continuum because we're moving forward. Thank you.
And thank you, Martha. James Lewis, you'll have the last word on this question.
Paraphrasing someone's quote, he said, "If you have to compare yourself to another candidate, you're in trouble." We all have different personalities, different skills, abilities. That said, I do see some very key things, and Martha just stole one of them. I've had several people in the district said, "You better keep Julie on staff," and that is very important to continue institutional knowledge. The other thing is, Gary was able to keep several things going. He chaired the Budget Committee and was able to help get us a surplus and a somewhat balanced budget that we want to keep. We cannot spend the one-time funds to do that. We need to budget wisely. We need to continue the conservative fiscal responsibility that he has shown and has led in, actually led, on the council to get others to agree at the same time. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you, candidates. It's now my turn to ask a question, and I'll do so once again on behalf of the Long Beach Community Action Partnership, or LB CAP, which is our host this evening and one of Long Beach's most active and accomplished agencies, working on behalf of the disadvantaged in our community. Here's the question. What is your vision for working with all sectors of the city, including those with low incomes? And we will begin this time with a one-minute response from Jack Rosenberg.
Well, once again, it comes back to growing the economy. We presently have a 12% unemployment rate in the city of Long Beach. It's 9% in the state of California, and it's 7% nationally. Obviously, we need to bring jobs to the city of Long Beach. We need to bring careers here. It is my job to help this city grow economically, to make the calls to companies that are out looking for the, looking at the possibility of moving to Long Beach. I have spoken with a number of civic leaders, along with business leaders, on putting together a tiger team, making them available to make the calls, to make a trip to go to, whether it be Seattle to talk to Boeing, or it happens to be downtown Los Angeles to talk to a firm that's going to move downtown. You know, our vacancy rates downtown are higher than they are in Orange County and West LA and downtown LA. We need to bring good-paying jobs, career jobs, to our city.
Thank you, Jack. Martha Gibson?
That is an excellent question, and it's about living wage jobs. Living wage jobs and education. That's what it really boils down to. As part of the fabric in Long Beach and working at all levels of government, I so get that we need to elevate Long Beach. When you are in the city council seat, you're not only representing your district, you are representing all of Long Beach. And so, as being schooled here, my children being schooled here, my siblings, my grandson being schooled here, I so get that it's about jobs and education.
Thank you, Martha. James Lewis?
This is a real critical question, and one of the questions that I had to friends when I was seeking final confirmation on whether to run for office, and that was, someone told me, "Jim, you are the candidate we need because you have a business acumen, you have an understanding of business, you've done business, but you also have a understanding of diverse cultural and social issues in Long Beach." I was brought in to fix a nonprofit, to help it grow, a nonprofit that, that's their job. They work within the continuum of care to reach out to our disadvantaged and give them a hand up, give them a sustainable life, and that is what we're about. We're not just, even affluent community like the 3rd District, they're not all affluent. There's a lot of people there, low-income and apartment dwellers, and there's families there. We need to focus our energy on creating sustainability for income, wages, and housing in Long Beach.
Thank you, Jim. Susan Price.
Thank you. You know, when you're a council person for the 3rd District, you don't represent just the interests of the 3rd District, you represent the interests of the entire city. That's your fiduciary responsibility. When I was a professor at Cal State Hayward, one of the things that I led was a community-based organization project where it was a public-private partnership where we brought job training to the most impoverished areas of the city of Oakland. As a prosecutor, I'm involved every single week in a gang education program that's designed to teach the youth about what dangers are out there and how to avoid them. How do we reach out to communities that are low-income? We reach out to them with, giving them an opportunity to be heard and setting them up for success, educating them and assisting them in deterring conduct that could lead them down the wrong road, and setting them up for success by giving them training and access to opportunities that will allow them to get on the economic ladder so that they can work hard and be personally accountable for their lives. And that's what I will do as a council member.
All right. Thank you, Susan. Thank you, all of you candidates. Admirable work. We will return after a two-minute break to hear the candidates for Long Beach's 3rd District City Council seat answer another round of questions from our panelists and me. This is a Long Beach Community Action Partnership Election Forum, coming to you live on Padnet.TV. Stay with us.
At the Long Beach Community Action Partnership, we're very proud of the millions of dollars that we provide in utility assistance services, and we're also proud of the thousands of people that we assist, including youth, adults, and seniors. But what we're most proud of are the relationships that we build one-on-one with people just like you to build a stronger community. Join us in changing lives and making a difference.
It's very pet-friendly. Everybody has a dog in Long Beach. It's Dog City.
Well, there's everything to do here. You've got the Pike, you've got Queen Mary, you've got the beaches, you've got paddle boarding, surfing. You go a half a mile that way, you've got surfing, you've got downtown.
I just think it's the most incredible, most beautiful, most unique city, which has so much to offer. So I love it here, and I'll never leave.
Welcome back to the Long Beach Community Action Partnership and Padnet Candidate Forum for the 3rd Council District in Long Beach. We are live on Charter, Charter Channel 32 and Verizon Channel 41 in Long Beach and streaming at Padnet.TV around the world. This is the 3rd Candidate Forum that LB CAP and Padnet will present as we head toward Election Day, April 8th. The next is one week from tonight, 7:00 PM on February 19th, when we will hear from candidates in the 5th District. We'll cap this series by inviting back the candidates for Mayor of Long Beach on April 2nd. All of these forums are available as video on demand at Padnet.TV. They will also be replayed on Charter and Verizon several times before the election. Again, you'll be able to find the videos and the replay dates and times on our election page at Padnet.TV. We'll now return to Shane Newell for his second question, which will go first to Martha F. Gibson. Shane?
In your mind, what is your greatest leadership experience that has prepared you as a candidate for the 3rd District?
I believe that at 14, I started out as a public servant in the U.S. Postal Service. And when you become a servant leader, you're leading the path. And with that, I have to say that I received a post from my son today saying, "Mother, I want to thank you for really showing me how to work hard." And, you know, it just touched me because that's the one thing that my mother taught us. She said, "You work hard, you get ahead." And with that, because of that leadership, I have been able to lead my children and foster children into great leadership roles in the community, and they themselves have become leaders outright, and I'm very proud to say that. It's all about the youth of tomorrow. Thank you.
Thank you, Martha. Jim Lewis?
Thinking about this, which is nice to have a moment to think about it, I go back to my dad. In the '50s, he was a single dad raising my sister and I, and he ran a gas station. He was a manager of Standard Oil. And then when he got remarried, he went to school at night, LaSalle University by extension, and he got his accounting degree and CPA degree. And then he unfortunately passed away at 36-years-old when I was 11. That has stuck with me, to see his initiative, his impetus to provide, to expand his education, and also my own family as the inspiration for me. I just finished my master's degree two years ago, and out of the six of us in our family, five have master degrees, and it's because of the feeling and the understanding that we have that education gives us to flourish in community.
Jim, I'll need to stop you there. Thank you very much. Susan Price?
Thank you. I've been working since I was 13-years-old and raised by a single mom, and along the way, I've had a lot of great leadership opportunities that I'm proud of. But my most recent success has been in 2008, the District Attorney of Orange County, my boss, put me in charge of the boss, put me in charge of the vehicular homicide unit. And we were the only district attorney's office in the state to have a dedicated vehicular homicide unit. In that unit, I was able to establish a new philosophy for how we prosecute DUI fatalities. I prosecuted nine DUI fatalities as murders, including the one where the Angels pitcher, Nick Aidenhart, was killed. And I worked in collaboration with three other agencies to bring $1.5 million of grant money to the county of Orange to fund investigations and prosecutions of driving under the influence of drugs cases. This was an unheard-of grant. We've been modeled by the Office of Traffic Safety over and over again and referred to as the gold standard. You can ask anyone in Orange County, that was my leadership that brought that to fruition, and I am very proud of it. Thank you.
Thank you, Susan. Jack Rosenberg.
The two things that I'm most proud of are my 28-year-old son and my 31-year-old daughter, who both have had very nice careers so far in their lives. And the other thing is my business career. I spent 45 years in business. I've been an owner, I've been a manager, I've been a salesman. I've written, I've signed the front of checks, and I have impacted many people who have worked for me and been managed by me and have gone on to grow their careers. As I look back on my business career, that's really what I'm proudest about, my kids and my business career.
Thank you, Jack. All right. We will go now to a second question from DeeDee Rossi. And the first to answer this one will be Jim Lewis.
Thank you, Matt. I had to ask this question because of all the answers we've been getting. The city's financial management department is projecting budget deficits in the near future. So, what areas would you cut? And then, what would be the process to ensure the most appropriate cuts are made?
Well, it's an interesting question and a difficult one because you're asking what programs you would actually cut. I think that the real question goes to understanding, for the public to understand that we are having a surplus because of the, the folding of RDA, the redevelopment association. So, that was a one-time thing. Going forward, we need people to make the right decisions that are objective, that weigh all the facts, that can build collaboration, and that can prioritize the, the core services that we need in the city. And so, I don't believe in across-the-board cuts. I think that's a lack of true management and leadership. We need to bring, to build clarity about what is the priority in the community. And then, together, as a city council, we would make those decisions, not an individual decision.
Thank you, Jim. Susan Price.
Well, DeeDee, I know you're not going to want to hear this, but it would be irresponsible for any of us to sit up here right now and tell you what program we would cut. We simply don't have the data to make that kind of a serious decision about our city's budget as candidates for council. Once we are on the council, we are going to be presented with data that will allow us to prioritize where the need is and what needs to be cut. I can tell you right now that public safety is an area where our city needs help and needs resources. Residential burglaries are a concern for every resident in the third district. And a lot of the residents in the third district understand what's been lost when we lost our patrol officers who used to walk up and down Second Street, for example. We need to restore those services. And if that means programs need to be cut so that we can restore those services, that might happen. But what programs are going to get cut? It would be irresponsible for me to tell you now. What I can tell you is that I will work with the city auditor to find efficiencies in existing programs that will allow us to be able to do more. Thank you.
Thank you, Susan. Jack Rosenberg.
Well, as some of you are aware, we just recently gave 15% increases across the board to the management of the city of Long Beach. For those of us that haven't received an increase in the last five years, I thought 15% was a little high. Going forward, if our budget remains at $400 million, the one elephant in the room is going to be continued pension reform. We have, we have pension reform that's going to need to be done over the next four to eight years. While Gary DeLong and Bob Foster have done a wonderful job, it is not completed. And new members of the city council and the new mayor are going to have to address that. Thank you.
Thank you, Jack. Martha Gibson.
Well, first of all, I want to say that it's not a cutting problem, it's a revenue problem. So, we, we definitely need to increase the revenue. With that said, I would work with Laura Dowd. There are some issues in the technology and some of the inefficiencies that are happening. And that's where I would want to start.
All right. Thank you, Martha. We'll go now to Josh Stewart, the third of our panelists. And this question will first be answered by Susan Price.
Thank you. The medical marijuana debate has gone on for years. Now, there's talk about permitting dispensaries in both industrial and commercial zones. How do you feel about dispensaries in District 3?
Well, I think we need to, you know, this issue has been so controversial and we've had so much, such a lack of clarity, really, in terms of what the city can do. Obviously, as a prosecutor, I believe we need to uphold the law and respect the entities that are protected under the law. I know that this particular subject is under heavy consideration by the city attorney. And I know that there's going to be recommendations on where those particular dispensaries can establish their operations. If, in fact, they qualify within the zoning areas of the third district, and they qualify within the parameters that are set by the city, then they should be allowed to operate. That's the law. In terms of where they're going to be allowed to operate and what the parameters, including the buffer zones and things, are going to be, that issue is still, has not been fleshed out. So, whether or not they will be able to establish operations in the third district in terms of falling within the zoning guidelines and the requirements that the city attorney will recommend, that remains to be seen.
Thank you, Susan. Jack Rosenberg.
Yes, the city attorney will have a great deal to say about where the dispensaries are going to go. This will probably be decided by the sitting city council prior to any of us being on the council. That going forward, there probably will, there will be a dispensary, maybe more than one in the third district. Where it'll be located, I'm not sure. What I would like to see personally is I would like to see the dispensaries actually be in existing drugstores, whether it be CVS or whether it be Rite Aid, where it can be more controlled than opening up a separate facility just as a dispensary.
Thank you, Jack. Martha Gibson.
Yes, that's a very important topic. It's one that I've thought about just in my recent weeks as patients that are going through some pain. And any type of dignity that you give them is feasible. And I would say that, just saying from that point of view, I believe that they do need to be regulated. However, you know, losing my brother in the last two weeks of cancer and seeing him die with dignity was huge to me and my family. So, if these, if marijuana can bring comfort and dignity to someone in pain, then we need to really look at that and look at that very carefully.
Thank you, Martha. We're sorry for your loss, of course.
Thank you.
James Lewis.
This is an issue that really frustrates me because it's endemic of our legislators in Washington and Sacramento not doing their job and just passing it down to the local governments who don't have a clue how we're supposed to deal with this. It's a, it's illegal at a federal level, but we're going to turn a blind eye. The state takes it and says, "Okay, we're going to approve it. You're on your own." This is an issue that needs to have leadership at the federal level and our state level. And we need to promptly and, and quickly get the parameters out for the people who are doing business. We are, we are taking people that are trying to do a business, a nonprofit business, to provide the medication, and we're leading them down through hoops. And in the end, they don't have anything to show for their return on investment. And that's a problem.
Thank you, James. And we do have time for one last question. And that one will once again come from me on behalf of LB CAP. We all know that the budget limits what the city's government can accomplish in our community. How would you reach out to local nonprofits to collaborate in providing the services that our community needs? And for this one, Jack Rosenberg, you'll be the first to respond.
Well, we have many nonprofits in the city of Long Beach who do a fantastic job of helping people at all different ages. And I, my intent is to work with these agencies to see how can I can be a more effective councilman. We will have quarterly meetings, whether it be at, at one of my office locations or we have it off-site. I don't think in the past, there's been a lot of communication between the nonprofits and any of the councilmen. And it's my intent to open this up on a more meaningful basis where I have a better idea of what the nonprofits' needs are.
Thank you, Jack. Martha Gibson.
What an excellent question. Speaking about nonprofits to a social worker, counselor, educator, that is part of my grain. So, it's definitely collaboration, definitely. And also, I've watched, working for the district for 24 years, I've watched grants come and go, and I've watched great data leave. And so, part of that, you know, it's always been my soapbox that we really need the public sector. It's missing. And private, public, both in a marriage, because that's how you bring the issue forward, where you don't have a grant that's there for three years and then it's gone, that it is ongoing, ongoing for the great of the community. It is needed, collaboration with all, all sectors at the table.
Thank you, Martha. James Lewis.
This is a real key issue for me in that I've given 20 years of my life to nonprofits. And in those nonprofits, I've learned that collaboration is the key, not only with each other, the nonprofits, but with government, with businesses, with individuals, with community groups. By joining together, the needs can be met, the priorities can be set. There's a lot of issues, services I don't really feel should be on the back of the taxpayer. They were, they used to be and can still be borne by nonprofit, privately-funded nonprofits. And they're done more efficiently and effectively and a higher return on investment for those that are investing in social services. Long Beach has its own continuum of care. That in itself is an exciting decision that was made back in the 90s. And we need to take advantage of that through the complete, large continuum of care to make this reality.
Thank you, Jim. And our last response to the second round of questions will come from Susan Price.
Thank you, Matt. I think my slogan in regard to this question will be, "Help me, help you." Because the bottom line is, I, I'm very proud of the expertise that I've built in the areas that I've been dedicated my life to for the, for the past, you know, 40-something years. But what I don't know, I would look to nonprofits to educate me on and assist me in figuring out how we can best service that particular community. Nobody knows the interests of their community the way a nonprofit knows the interests of their community. They have enough passion about their issue that they actually form an organization about it. I took a grant-writing class when I was getting my master's in public policy and administration at Cal State Long Beach from the late Dr. Barber. And one of the things he taught us is, when you have a specific plan of what you want to put in place, there are grant monies available. And you can work together with leaders in the community by saying, "Help me, help you." What do you need? What do you need? And how can the city help you facilitate that goal? Not how can the city do it for you, but what can we do to get you there? Thank you.
Thank you, Susan. And thank you, panelists and candidates, all of you as well. We're going to close now, close this forum by giving each candidate one additional minute for a closing statement. And we will start back here, right next to me, with Martha Gibson.
Thank you. Thank you, Matt. I want to thank PadNet. I want to thank the, everybody that asked us questions. They were excellent, excellent questions. I want to thank the candidates and the public. Thank you for listening to us. This is very important to me. I am who I am. I have visibility and commitment, collaboration, and dedication. I am fully engaged to be your next city council person. You can visit me on www.marthafloresgibson.com. You can visit me on Twitter, on Instagram, on Facebook. You can look me up and find out more about me. And again, thank you so much.
Thank you, Martha. James Lewis, your closing statement.
Thank you. Thank you, PadNet in-house for bringing us here. This is absolutely a critical educational piece for the voters of Long Beach and our district. I have 20 years of corporate and nonprofit executive experience. I have built collaborations, I have budgeted, increased revenue, hired staff. Had to go through critical studies on contingency plans for how to protect our core services in a down economy. I am the kind of person that can bring people together, individuals, businesses, nonprofit, corporate, and government, to bring around, to come around what's in the best interest of the district and the city. And don't take my word for it. Go to my website, jimlewisforcouncil.com, and see what other people say about me. I'm not a good salesman myself because I've usually sold other people and programs.
Jim, I better stop you there. I'm sorry. Susan Price, your closing statement.
Thank you, and thank you for this opportunity to have this forum. I am the balanced candidate. I have the proud, I'm very proud to have the endorsement of the police officers, the firefighters, and the Chamber of Commerce. I believe that that grouping of endorsements shows that I am the candidate that is most balanced and well-rounded in terms of what I can bring to the third district. I have the ability to build collaborations. I've been doing it my entire life. And I'll be able to work with the other members of the council to make things happen and to get the votes we need for, for effective leadership. I have my finger on the pulse. I represent a community of young families, and I also have a mother that's about to retire here in the third district. I understand the needs of our community, not just today, but for the future. And I have the energy to give this position everything that it needs for as long as the city residents will allow me to stay in the position. I ask for your vote. I ask for your support. I too have a website, Facebook, and all of that at susypriceforforcitycouncil.com. Thank you.
Thank you, Susan. And Jack Rosenberg, you'll have our final closing statement of the evening.
I want to thank everybody. What I rely on is my 45 years of business experience, my 20 years of living in the third district. I am the most balanced candidate. I know how to handle balance sheets. I know how to handle income and expenses. I know how to grow businesses, grow the city, so we can take the proper position. We are the 36th biggest city in the United States. We should start working towards living like that. I have the support of the current sitting councilman, Gary DeLong. And going forward, I will continue many of his policies with regards to fiscal restraint and growing the economy. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jack. And thank you, all of you candidates, for joining us this evening and providing a real introduction to many of the people in the third district and elsewhere in our community. And panelists, we're also very grateful for your service to the Long Beach community tonight and every day. We are also very grateful to RD&amp;M Design and Marketing for their generous underwriting donation that helped make this program possible. You, your company, your organization can also become an underwriter of this forum series. To learn how, visit our elections page at padnet.tv. One more reminder that this forum will be available as video on demand and will be replayed on Charter, Channel 32, and Verizon FiOS Channel 41 throughout the election season. You'll find the video and broadcast schedule at padnet.tv. Please tell your friends and neighbors about the remaining city council candidate forums. We'll next meet the candidates in City Council District 5 on Wednesday, February 19th, at 7:00 PM. Our second and final mayoral candidate forum will take place on April 2nd, just six days before Long Beach goes to the polls. Thanks for watching and for helping to shape the future of our great city. Good night.